...could lead to a bunch of private equity firms having trouble at once. Here's the significant risk, here's the problem. So, a stock market just fine, it doesn't last very long. Like even if an interest price has happened very quickly. But if you have seventeen thousand private equity firms liquidating their portfolios of companies over a period of five to ten years, then it's going to result in depressed valuations for a very long time. So the next barrel market that we have could take longer than previous ones we had in the past. Jared Gillian of Jared Gillian Money, he has new report on private equity, the link on our website. Mr. Gillian, thanks so much.
Hey, thank you.
A profit equity bubble, how about the expanding bubble that is the holiday shopping season? It used to start after Thanksgiving. My phone got yell alerts over the weekend as retailers spread over disruptive shopping patterns. I'm Neil Basapo, where the marketplace's warning report. From ATM, American Public Media. Hi, I'm Neil Basapo. Are you someone who talks about how great public radio is, but you're still not a donor? Rather than waiting for the next flight to arrive, you can support the programs you love by donating that unwanted vehicle. Donate it then, it could be worth hundreds of dollars to this station, and you could get a tax deduction. Or you could just give up hundreds of dollars directly. We like that a lot. Hey, thank you. For more information, go to our website, www.rnt.org. Radio on TV is broadcast from the digital on W B C F Rose, W R N Q Charles City, Richmond, W U R U Richmond, W B T U Charlotte's Hill, W B T W Charlotte's Hill, W B T R Mary, W R N C F and Y, different two R Q spots of the news, W R Q R Leslie, W A C M, and in Richmond, our nine hundred and twenty five, some places, about ninety four. Radio on TV, service. Somebody else? Um, yeah. There's going to be some music all day.
Oh, man. Oh, Monday, Monday.
Hello. You're my husband. Yeah, yeah. Oh.
I still feel pretty good yesterday, but I'd already got dressed. What part? Sure, it's easy to do. Yeah. I was sitting out with us. Yeah, we're getting better. Actually, with the face, it's small.
Hey, Doc.
Okay.
I can pray. Okay. She got a holiday season, and she's there. You can wait for me. No, I'm leaving. And we have our people all the way. They were so long. I'm getting over to them.
Where's, um, where are you at?
They came in, they came in, they were in there. Okay, oh, this, but that's the school, not the school, everybody's got to see. Your people sent them in, it's no question. Right. I'm trying to remember. I'll just say, um, the topic's not going to, it's, uh, it was an accident. We're trying to, we're working, people, people, there, we are seeing, oh, yeah, but.
Did you get my response to the question yesterday about Friday night? Yeah, I wrote him saying, you know, when Russell plays in, and they play Thursday night, they go five and O, so I'll be over there Friday night.
No worries, I understand.
I told him we'll get to him Sunday evening, but then answer something. Was that true? The play, yeah, Tom, that beautiful, that son? Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, he will, well, he, he has a good, like, he was always feeling like, like, what's all right?
Oh, yeah, that's all right. That's good to get experience, catch, catch them when you get to be a junior, see? They keep going like that.
Trick.
and I'll ask our clerk, Miss Susie McQuarrie, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds is absent this morning. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a quorum, Ms. President. We're going, the first thing this morning, we're going to recess, our council meeting for our legislative committee meeting, which will be chaired by Councilmember Whiteboy. So, and following the meeting, we'll reconvene here in council. So with that being said, I will.
I have those departmental directors here.
And then following that, the legislative meeting, we'll have a joint meeting of city council and the Economic Development Authority. All right, so with that, I will turn it over to Chairwoman, Ms. Trish Whiteboy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Spencer, is, um, is Neil coming to facilitate this meeting with us?
She's right there.
Is she right there?
Just waiting to.
Wait, just waiting, just waiting for Susie to give up the seat?
Yeah, and Susie's been wonderful helping.
I know, because Susie was kind of sitting there like she was going to hang around for the legislative.
No, no, she's done a wonderful job helping, working with Bridget.
Yes, that, yes, thank you so much.
We're very appreciative of the work and the efforts that Clerk's Office has given us.
You and I catching right on.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for all of our printouts. And if you don't mind, I'll ask you to go ahead and call the roll.
Absolutely. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds? Ms. Quintana? Ms. Saunders Cotton?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here.
And a quorum, Ms. President. Thank you so much. I just want to thank everyone for coming, um, for this, um, impromptu, I guess, legislative meeting. We were trying to, to go without a second meeting, but we had so many items, we needed to, to have one more meeting, and we'll probably have another one in November. But this meeting, we had asked for some priorities, um, some recommendation and priorities from our city, um, departments. But before I do that, I need to get an approval for the minutes. They were submitted electronically, and I hope everyone, um, had a chance to read those if, if they got them. And, um, is, is there any corrections? Did everyone get them? Is there any corrections? Hearing no corrections to those minutes, they will be, um, submitted as written. And moving on to, um, item four, we have, um, discussions of recommended list of legislative priorities from city departments. So we have, um, quite a few, and I'm going to start with, um, the Police Department. And I understand we have, um, Mr., uh, Officer Puckett?
Yes.
You're, you're Captain Puckett? Or you're going to?
He's Deputy Chief.
I mean Deputy.
Deputy Chief.
Oh, Deputy Chief, okay.
Moving up.
Yeah, we're, that's right, Deputy Chief.
Puckett and Crawley.
Oh, Deputy Chief Adam Puckett? And you say, who else do we have? I just have, uh, okay.
Deputy Chief Crawley.
Uh, Mike.
He's also here.
Okay. So we're going to start with you guys, and what would be really helpful is, is if you would give the Legislative Committee just a summary and an overview of your requests, so that we know exactly what it is that you're asking for. And I think that will help, um, move us along relatively quickly. Thank you, I appreciate it. The floor is yours. Does everyone have a copy of their? You do, okay.
All right, good morning. We appreciate the invite here to, uh, represent the Police Department. We're going to start with the first one, which is Interstate Reciprocity for Law Enforcement Act. The idea behind that is that legislation will come up with, um, some rules and standards that will allow us to have reciprocal agreements between other states. With that being said, it should help with the mobility of police officers moving between states while we're able to continue their careers in Virginia without unnecessary delays or recertification processes, as long as they meet the D C J S standards. The consistency in the standards, uh, if we leverage these with other states that meet the Virginia D C J S standards, the legislation will ensure that certified officers maintain a high level of competency and professionalism regardless of their state of employment. If we do this, it'll also enhance recruitment and retention. Law enforcement officer, law enforcement agencies will be, benefit from a larger pool of qualified candidates as they are easily moved to relocate between states. So that's the first act that we would like to recommend.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that would definitely, uh, help with the mobility, and they don't have to get recertified across the states, so that would be certainly helpful for us.
Good morning. The second, um, legislation, uh, that we'd like to have addressed really strikes home for the community here in Roanoke and across, uh, Commonwealth and, and across the country. And it deals with, uh, gun violence and, more importantly, uh, the accessibility of guns in juveniles, right? And what we look, uh, in our next request is for enhanced penalty for adults who give access to guns to minors. And so as, as what we've seen across the country and even our communities where we have adults, you know, young adults, anyone legally over the age of eighteen, who is, uh, accompanied by a juvenile, and what they will do from time to time is, they will pass that firearm to juvenile, so they are not being held accountable. And right now, uh, the, the penalty for that is, is a lot of times is contributing to the minor, contributing to delinquency of a minor, which is a class one misdemeanor. Uh, we feel that that's not adequate. We feel that if we're going to have adults who prey on juveniles in criminal activity and pass along guns to them, there needs to be an enhanced penalty. And so what we suggest is the General Assembly really take a hard look at this and see if we can hold those adults accountable, um, with a much more severe penalty than the class one misdemeanor. Is there any questions on that?
That become a felony?
Uh, yes, yes. I think, I think we, we, our, our recommendation is to look at making that a felony.
Thank you, um, Deputy Chief Crawley. Before you leave, I'm going to ask, um, our legislative liaison, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Bryant, um, do you have any comment for, for these two deputy chiefs, um, about the, the recommendations that they just brought forward? I know that our agenda is so packed, and, and we have so many things, and you know, the senators and, and the legislators can only carry so many, so we're trying to consolidate or get other agencies with some of the same ideas and some of the same recommendations to work with us together. So I'll let Mr. Bryant, um, speak with you for just a second on his thoughts on how we can get some of these things done, because personally, I think these are very important, and we'll, we'll continue to talk about it, but I appreciate you bringing these issues forward.
There's one. Thank you, ma'am.
You, you have one?
Yes, ma'am, one more.
About the economic?
The last one that we would like, um, the legislation to take a look at would be mandatory minimums for fentanyl. We know they have those for other narcotics such as, uh, methamphetamines, but we don't for fentanyl. Right now, fentanyl is one of the leading causes of death across the country, and we know that Virginia in itself has taken it upon itself to really come hard against fentanyl use. So we'd like the legislation to take a look at actually mandatory minimums for the possession and manufacturing and distribution of fentanyl.
Is that the last one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Bryant?
Madam Chair, Preston Bryant here. Thank you for allowing me to join and monitor, listen in. The Youngton Administration and the, um, General Assembly have taken up a lot of, uh, general, uh, professional reciprocity bills in the last couple of years. Uh, this one could be in that category. On the gun violence and mandatory minimums, um, those would not be unusual pieces of legislation to be introduced and heard. One of the State Crime Commission has looked at these, uh, these two issues in particular. I don't know, I have to research, but, um, they, they could be, um, they would not be unusual to, to be heard.
And what about the fentanyl? Did you hear, do you have any thoughts on that?
On the mandatory minimums for, for fentanyl, um, I will say that some of the General Assembly over the last handful of years have been, um, skeptical of mandatory minimums, but I think a lot of people do recognize that the, the scourge of fentanyl, and, uh, this may be viewed differently, but I, I cannot predict, uh, how they will view it.
Well, we, we appreciate you.
I'll just say sometimes, uh, the General Assembly will refer, um, for study issues like these to the State Crime Commission.
And Madam Chair, if I can, if this meeting, if we can get thumbs up or thumbs down from the Legislative Committee, then what I can do is I can work with our Legislative Liaison. There might be some of these bills that we'll support through other organizations.
Right.
And then that's what we'll bring back in November and really have this thing ready for consideration and further discussion. But if today we can just get a thumbs up or thumbs down to the general request and whether the Legislative Committee supports it, that would be wonderful. Then I can work with Mr. Bryant and the departments to see the best way to achieve those goals.
Yeah, I know that we would have to incorporate some of the other organizations. I, I would like to get a general consensus. I think that, um, they were well thought out, and, um, I know Chief Booth is not going to bring forward something that they don't feel is, is prudent and necessary. So I just get a, get a consensus from my colleagues here on the dais. Um, they, they brought forward three items, um, and like Mr. Spencer said, you know, if we can't individually ask our senators or representatives to carry them individually, there may be other organizations that can accompany us. How do you guys feel about that?
I think we should do all three.
All three?
I, I agree, I think, and they all have had impacts in our city.
Yes.
Definitely. And so especially, uh, fentanyl and, and juveniles with guns. So I'm, I'm supportive of all three.
Oh, everyone in favor, Mr. Cobb? Um, I think, I think we got, um, a consensus, I think it's unanimous on the dais, so we will move forward with all three and see how we can get them addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Deputy Chief Crawley and Deputy Chief Puckett.
Hey, Chief Crawley, did you bring your green card to come to work this morning? I did, remember. I would hand it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for being here. So we have, um, we're going to move on, because I know we've got a lot on this agenda this morning, with, um, economic development. Mark Nelson, Nelson approved, approved this request, and, um, I don't know if Ms. Condiv, are you going to do it, Mark?
He's here, yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee.
Good morning.
Basically, the, the request that we've made is looking at the state level funding for enterprise zones. Currently, there are about thirty enterprise zones that are state approved. Uh, there are two different grants that come from the state level. There's the real property investment grant and the, and the job creation grant. Uh, there is talk of legislation being passed to be able to expand those, uh, the number of zones, which means that localities would be able to add a zone if they don't currently have one. Uh, our concern is that if they do add more zones, that, if they don't increase the funding pool, then the grants that are provided now would be, would be prorated. So all of the funding usually goes first for job creation grants, and so they would go through that pool of money first, which means that real property investment grants, which are very valuable to localities for helping get redevelopment done, would then be prorated if they don't increase that pool. So the thought that we had was that if we looked at the possibility of expanding the, or providing additional funding to make sure that the, any sort of increases in the zones would also allow for, uh, the current level of funding to be sustained or increased, so we can use that across the different zones, that, that's our goal.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Nelson. Yours is primarily a funding request. You have it, Mr. Spencer? You got that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And let's see who else we have here. We have, um, um, requests from, submitted by Mr. Campbell. Are you here, uh, Mr. Campbell?
Do you need us to say yes for that?
Um, well.
If, I think we've got, is there general support and consensus? Okay.
Yeah, for, for that, yeah. Um, and then, Dr. Patton, do you have, um, was Mr. Campbell going to?
I can speak to.
You going to speak to this one? Okay.
Yes. Uh, the item that has, uh, been brought forth by, uh, Mr. Ross Campbell, who is a P E, our P E here in the city, uh, addresses, um, Stormwater Local, it's a Stormwater Local Assistance Fund, which is known as the S L A F, and it's to provide matching grants to, for various, uh, capital projects, including new and retrofitted stormwater best management practices, uh, stream, uh, restoration, low-impact development projects, buffer restoration, pond retrofitting, and wetlands restoration. Currently, the funding mechanism prioritized large stream restoration projects, particularly those supporting Chesapeake Bay watershed water quality efforts. So, um, with this legislative, uh, process that we are supporting, it would provide, uh, predicated and equitable access to funds to, for localities throughout the Commonwealth, and not just those who are in the Chesapeake Bay watershed area. And it would ensure a fair resource distribution to address stormwater management needs, and thirdly, allow localities to prioritize projects that deliver the most community benefit encompassing a broader range of project types as described in section sixty-two, one dash fourteen, fifteen, twenty-nine, and one.
Thank you, um, Dr. Patton. So really, it's just asking, um, for more flexibility? Yes. With the allocation, okay.
Takes more money.
Yeah.
West of Short Creek.
Right.
Yes, the Chesapeake Bay is.
Yeah.
The one that gets all money.
The one that gets all the money, yeah.
And Roanoke doesn't go there. Because we're part, if I may, from a former membership as a member of, on the board of the Roanoke River Basin Association, um, this part of the state gets no funding, especially what we have seen that's happened in Damascus. That would not qualify for a lot of stormwater funds and grants to restore that area. This would open it up, and it would be a very good thing for Roanoke, because Roanoke River, as we remember from nineteen eighty-five, it does flood, and things that we can do. Now, we did a lot under the federal government. It would be nice to have state funds that currently are all going towards Chesapeake, under Chesapeake Bay Act, to have that available to us here. Funny thing about the way that works.
Well, I tell you, nobody, we just don't bring forward things that are frivolous. I mean, they're all important, and we all try to figure out a way to get them done, otherwise they wouldn't be coming forward, uh, you know, to, to be added to our legislative agenda. So I guess Tim is looking for us so that we can kind of sum it up. He and I can get together for, uh, some nods to make sure that we're all on one accord. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right, thank you. And we have, uh, another one, um, from, from Ms. Lindsay.
Um, yes, I, um, have Mrs. Lindsay, and Mrs. Lindsay is not here, she's, uh, been under the weather. But, um, her, um, concerns as it relates to, um, the pieces that provide input to several areas I shall share this morning. Um, good morning. In response to the requests for concerns and issues, I offer the following below. Concern: retaining and attracting and continuing necessary training for nine-one-one first responders. Ask is for additional resources for the state for this issue. Concern: potential or proposed changes to portions of sales tax and personal property tax. Ask: oppose any imposition or extension of state mandated exemptions on local property taxes or any new state policy that reduces the portion of sales tax or personal property taxes. The justification will, the jurisdiction will collect without a long or short-term whole harmless provision. A concern: jail per diem payments have not kept pace with cost. Ask: increase compensation for local jails housing state responsible mandates. Concern: communications tax has not been reviewed and updated for more, um, modern forms. Ask: modernize the communication sales and use tax structure to reflect the modern telecommunications landscape which has changed since the imposition in twenty oh seven. And her last concern: workers' compensation expansion of eligible, uh, presumptive illness. Ask: do not extend workers' compensation presumptive illness eligibility for public employers without additional state funding. Please advise, um, any questions and ask for any opportunity to provide comment. Margaret.
Thank you, um, Dr. Patton. That's, that clearly speaks for itself. It looks like mostly funding, um, and budget issues, so we'll, um, take a look at that. You never know how the budget's going to go, but we'll, um, take a look at it. I think we lost one, but I think everybody's okay with that. Um, moving on, let's see who we have next. Um, I don't, I think that may.
I think that's all I see.
Sustainable.
Yeah, that was on there before. That was on there before, but it, um, do you want, do you, have you guys taken a look at it? That was one of the ones that came in early. Actually, it came in, that was the first one I got, actually. Uh, so it's been on there.
Correct, and those are, the general purpose, and I'll work with Mr. Bryant on this, to make sure that we do support sustainability in different measures in that, and we'll include that in our draft for consideration of the legislative report in November. Another one that we have dealing with staff, I believe KC sent, wanted to give us an update.
Yes, I have, yeah, I have, that was the la, I think that's the last one.
And he's here to speak on that, just to give us an update, and the, he's actually stayed right on top of this issue.
Mr. Bratton?
Sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, that's the last one, other than the one from the school, and.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, this is just a, this is more or less an update. Um, my colleagues from around the state, the other assessors, this is going to be, this is a continuation from the twenty twenty-four session, whereby House Bill fourteen forty-six wants us to appraise property, appraise affordable housing separate from the way we normally appraise it outside of market value. And we feel like it's going to create an unfunded mandate, undue hardship on us as far as staff and also inequities. It's something that they're, the, uh, the Virginia Housing Commission's meeting on November twenty-sixth. We'll keep you updated as it goes along, but what they're, what they want to be able to do is not have this go forward. It's kind of, it really puts us in a position where we would have to individually appraise property, and it commingles as use standards, um, use pap standards, which our office is licensed. So what it does, standard one provides for private appraisal fee appraisers, standard five and six address mass appraisal. So we'll keep you posted on it. We think we're in good shape, but for the most part, we just don't want this to kind of, this to go forward, because it could create a hardship on us, may have to staff up and everything else, so, any questions?
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Spencer.
Are you really just looking for the Legislative Committee to support V O A A?
Yes.
V A A O's position?
Position, yeah.
Yes, and I mean, and if you read through what we, what I've had, it just gives you the reason, um, it tells you why, and it goes into depth about why we want it.
Okay, I'm sure Mr. Bryant's listening, and Tim's all, all over it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bratton. And, um, uh, we have, also, we got, uh, Ms. Saunders, you, you guys coming, or you got any additional? We have the ones that you've submitted, um, early on, but you've got some more?
No, ma'am. So this is just a recap for you all, good morning.
Okay.
These priorities were presented to you before by Dr. White, and so this is just a recap. Dr. Seber has provided a packet for you so that you can see in detail at high level what we, what we will be presenting. Um, and I also want to thank Dr. White and Dr. Seber, who is our Constituent Services and Government Relations Officer, for putting together our priorities. Uh, so we have local control, school safety and security, commitment to serving all students, governance and budgets, employee compensation, and assessment and accountability modernization. So again, these are the six priorities that we will be, uh, looking forward to adopting tomorrow, the, the school board during our meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Again, this is just a recap, so if you have any questions, just let us know.
Okay, and, and, and if there's something that changes or it's something that's not adopted, you want to send an email?
Absolutely.
Over to, for us to follow up?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Yeah, because we did have these before, we've already had them, and we've already agreed that these are really good positions, so we'll stick with that. And thank you for being here. We tried to do the legislative meeting first so that folks can get back to work, um, and then we'll move forward with our agenda, but thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the work you're doing, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that was the only one that we had, um, and, and so for us, we've submitted our request, and I just want to make sure, uh, my colleagues on the dais, do you have anything else that you want to add? Did you, you've gotten something else, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, in a, in addition to the ones that we have in our minutes about the, uh, increasing the limit on assessed value for, uh, land bank and tracking House Bill eight oh two, uh, regarding an injunction against landlords, um, the, um, what's called HOTSE, Housing Opportunity Tax Credits, uh, is due to sunset in twenty-five, and I'd like to us, for us to advocate for its renewal for the next five years. Um, there, there's a direct connection with low-income housing tax credits, and it's really critical with the work we're doing, I think, to continue that, um, legislation.
Is it, Tim, is that on your radar?
I can forward you the, the information.
Please, because I want to make sure that we put that in there.
Yeah.
I suspect there is for.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of encouragement to, to renew it, but we just want to make sure our representatives are on it.
Vice Mayor, can you send it to all of us as well?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Okay. And Mr. Wallison?
Yeah, so I'm on the legislative committee for the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Excuse me, we would like to, I'd like to add their legislative agenda to ours. I have a copy of it that's coming.
I was gonna say, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, it's coming. We're just finalizing it, but once we get that finalized, we'd like for that to be something that, you know, is.
I certainly don't think there would be any objection to it. I was just gonna say, I don't see anything, have not heard anything.
Yeah, it would just be good to help out our regional partners as we continue to do stuff with the city as well.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah. If you will submit a copy, send it to all of us so that we know what you're submitting, and then, no, say, well, send it to all, but I was gonna say, send it to Mr. Spencer, and then copy us.
Yes.
Because we don't have that either. But I think that's it.
I need to, I mentioned at the last meeting the need for us to endorse the Transportation Museum to become a state agency.
Is it already listed on the?
Well, it's, no, it's not, I don't see it. It's mentioned that, I mentioned it at the last meeting, but if we could get Mr. Spencer to include that, we're beginning to get a little bit of momentum, and having this support of the city would be great. Most of you may not know, the city started that museum. It was a city museum. The reason I know was I was on the board when I was fifteen and afraid to open my mouth, which unfortunately, I'm not afraid to do now, but be that as it may, that would be very helpful. And if Peter take it back and see if the Roanoke Allegheny Commission will put that on theirs, that would be really good for us as well.
Well, I appreciate you reiterating that, because you did mention it, and it's on here. It's on, it's in the minutes.
Okay, good. I knew it was on the minutes, I didn't know whether we had it formally.
Yeah, yeah, so we kind of just.
We just get Mr. Bryant to work really hard on that one, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we, it's in there, it's in there, yeah.
Good.
It's in there. That was the only thing. I don't see anything else, and if I'm overlooking, is there anyone else here that wanted to speak to our legislative agenda that I've overlooked or have not submitted a request? Okay, hearing none.
That's good, too.
That's it, that's good. So let me see where we are here. So I think that's it. Mr. Mayor, we can adjourn this meeting. I know that we will have to schedule our next meeting, and I'll talk to Mr. Spencer about that. Do you have a date in mind?
November four.
Four, okay.
At nine AM again. By that time, my hope is to work with Mr. Bryant and have a, have a draft of the legislative committee priorities and the documents that are, items that we're gonna support, and where we can find support. For example, some of those items for the police department we'll support, but will, with Mr. Bryant's help, he'll say, the Chiefs Association already is gonna handle this. We'll just support their position.
Yeah, get some.
And I'll work with him and clarify that so that we're in a good position for this committee to have final approval would be the goal.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I keep trying to remind everybody that we have so much, and that the senators can only carry, I think, fifteen or twenty bills, and the delegates, even less than that. And we have so many things that are important, so just want to keep in mind that we will do everything that we can to address those top priorities, but there may be some things that will not make this legislative agenda, and we'll have to move on, move forward to the next one, or get some of our partner organizations to help us, which is a good thing. So with that being said, there is no other business I see before the legislative committee, so we will adjourn at nine thirty-one AM. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. We will now call a meeting of the Economic Development Authority, a joint meeting that we have with the Chairman Naff and members of that committee.
There's a whole lot of stuff in this legislature, and you know they're not gonna just carry our stuff. I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot of stuff.
Madam Clerk, do we need to call a roll for this council, this meeting?
Yes.
If you would, please, and Mr. Naff, I'll ask you to call it your role.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Wallison?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds is absent. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, thank you. Mr. Naff, let me say, it's good to see you all this morning. We generally don't get together that often, but we try to meet with most of our committees at least once a year. Sometimes that's kind of tough, but we're delighted to have you here today, and a very informal meeting to discuss some issues. And I will call on you, if you got any opening remarks that you want to share, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Good morning, Dr. Patton, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of council. I'm Braxton Naff, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Authority. We believe that generally, the overall state of economic development in the city is very strong right now. We've worked together with the Department of Economic Development on a number of projects, both ongoing and new, that we are very excited to share with you today. It was requested that Mark Nelson give this presentation, so if you have further to do.
I wouldn't say requested so much as instructed to. Just a presentation, love it up here.
I think it's on the desk.
Yeah, I see.
Well, good morning, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and it is my pleasure to come and present this, this presentation to you about, just giving a general overview of the Economic Development Authority. And so I think most folks on this board are aware that in the state of Virginia, it is forbidden for local governments to provide any sort of funding to private businesses, but I wanted to make that clear for any folks in the audience who may not be familiar with how EDA's function. The EDA is basically a seven-member committee. They're council-appointed. Presently, we have, we have seven members who are here with us today. It's Braxton Naff serves as our chairman. Bill Poe serves as our treasurer and senior vice pres, sorry, I got his title in there. Bill Poe serves as our treasurer for about another twenty-something days. His term expires at the end of October. Duke Baldridge is our vice chair, and Tamiya Franco, Ali Howie, and Kit Hale, and Anita Reed are current members as well. We are, as I've seen for every single board that we have in this city, Sam Darby is the fantastic counsel that we have for the EDA. So the EDA's initiatives include issuing industrial revenue bonds, administering the local enterprise zone programs, and serving as a passive performance agreements. When the city enters into any sort of performance agreement, again, since that money mostly goes to private entities, it has to flow through the EDA. So the EDA is generally the one that disperses funds once the city approves agreements. Some of the investments they made in two thousand and twenty-four is the joint retail study with Roanoke County and the City of Salem. The Ramp Grants, for those who are not familiar, Ramp is the accelerator run by Verge, and when we first stood up that program, the original grants went to Virginia Western Community College for administration of the building. When, when Virginia Western's contract ended and Verge stepped in, we continued the grant programs, support for the building, programmatic support, things like that. Affordable Housing Fund, which was started by the city, the EDA made a contribution of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to that. The Riverdale Performance Agreement, which I think this board is well familiar with. The Campbell Court Performance Agreement, that is the agreement for the old bus station on Campbell Avenue. And one of the new things that we've, that they've provided for is the Business Equipment Incentives Program, which I will cover a little bit more in detail at the end. For industrial revenue bonds, I'll go through this very quickly. The EDA issues industrial revenue bonds to assist with financing and acquisition and construction of property. The EDA is the issuer of the bond, and the entity benefits from locality's credit rating and can receive lower, can receive lower interest rates. In return, the entity is charged annual administrative fee by the EDA. That goes into a general pool of funding that they can use for various projects. One of the big things that the EDA administers is the Enterprise Zone. That is a program that is actually administered by the EDA, but since the EDA does not have staff, the city of economic, the city's economic development department serves as the liaison, and that is done by Alicia Kundif. Alicia is probably the best person, I've seen five people do this job, they've all done it well. Alicia, I will say, has done it the best of everyone I've ever seen. It's basically a partnership between the state and local government, and encourages job creation and private investments in enterprise zones. The Enterprise Zone can be in certain areas. That's the map that you see, the areas in purple are where the Enterprise Zone is. We will be coming back to this body later on in the month, because we have amendments to that, which is required by state law. We have to have a public hearing. We'll bring that to you later in October. One of the big things is, we don't administer the job grants as much as we do the, as much as we do the private investment. Basically, part of what you're able to do is, through, the state offers job incentive grants and the real property investment grants. Ours, the local handles the facade grants, partial real estate tax exemptions, and the building permit fees and comprehensive development plan rebates. The big things that we have as a city is, the facade grant is huge, and the building permit fees are also a large part of what we do. For the state level, we see more on real property investment grants, which is a, it's a program that can return. Can you help me with the numbers on that?
Yeah, it can return up to hundred thousand dollars in grants if it's under five million. If it's over five million for a project, it can return up to two hundred thousand.
So it's a very lucrative program. That's actually the thing that we were bringing to you as part of the legislative request earlier today. Those are the two biggest ones, the ARPIG grant for the state level and the facade grants at the local level. Some of the examples of what we have in progress is the Fallon Flores Building. It's, you know, it's located right down the street on Church Avenue. It's being converted to a restaurant with apartments above it. Another one is the Colony House Motor Lodge. It's a five hundred thousand dollar investment. I think you can see that those are properties that both sat vacant for a while. The use of the Enterprise Zone program allowed them to be able to bring those buildings back to life. Other major enterprise investments include Fire Station Number One, which I think everyone is very well familiar with. It's a three million dollar investment. It's a seven-room boutique hotel. It has a fantastic restaurant in the back, and serves as the retail hub for texture furniture. Texture Furniture has their manufacturing hub down in southeast in the Riverdale Development. They also recently expanded to the Manchester area of Richmond, but they still proudly call Roanoke home, and one of the reasons they're able to do that and have that retail flagship here is because the Enterprise Zone benefits allowed the owners of the building to rehab the building. Other major enterprise zone investments include the Brandon Avenue Project, where River Ridge Dermatology and Donnie D's Bagels is going to go. Just as a reminder to you, the ribbon cutting for that event, just a shameless plug, is October twenty-fifth. Everyone's very excited about the medical side, but this is one of those rare cases where everybody's more excited about the bagels than they are about the actual medical The EDA also administers performance agreements. Here's examples of two of them, which we mentioned previously. First of all is the Riverdale Project, which is a sixty million dollar investment overall. It includes a ten million dollar investment from the city. Also, the Randolph Street Project, also known as Campbell Court, which is the bus station rehab on Campbell Avenue. And feel free to stop me if you need to, I'm just trying to move quickly in order to keep your time efficient. Another request that has come up, and I'll let, I'll let Duke Baldridge talk a little bit more about this. ArtSpace has made a request of funding from the state, from the city and from, and from the EDA. ArtSpace is a nonprofit organization based out of Minneapolis. They do affordable housing, and they mix that with art, making affordable housing for artists. They are proposing to do a building over in Riverdale that would be sixty to eighty units. It's a twenty million dollar investment. On the front end, they generally look to localities or some sort of mix of locality and private investment to overcome some of the administrative hurdles they see in the beginning. So I'm gonna actually give the floor to Mr. Baldridge to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. We have a, we just learned about this in our last meeting. This is an emerging but very exciting project. ArtSpace is a national nonprofit real estate developer, and they have set a letter of intent saying they've made an enthusiastic commitment to begin the project process in order to commit. ArtSpace's mission is to create, foster, and preserve affordable and sustainable space for artists and arts and cultural organizations. There's some pretty amazing things about this organization. Fifty-seven projects in thirty-five cities in twenty-three states. This would be their first Virginia project, not North, not Charlesville, not Northern Virginia. Their projects have spurred developments in surrounding neighborhoods after every one of their developments. Their selected site in southeast fits into the city's efforts to revitalize and stimulate housing development in that sector. They've invested eighty-five thousand dollars in a feasibility study and see substantial support. Over eight hundred artists responded to this study. Warren City was represented by staff Bob Cowell, Chris Chinum, Sandra Turner, and Doug Jackson, who spent hours, countless hours, with ArtSpace as a part of this feasibility study. Here's what they're proposing. A twenty million dollar grain field development with probably eighty, we'd like to think, units, because the demand is way beyond the sixty or eighty. It could be way more than that. One hundred percent of which are affordable. That's an anomaly in real estate development. It's only a small percentage. The tenants must be between thirty percent and sixty percent of the AMI. Again, well below the average. They want to raise five hundred dollars from the sponsor. I mean, the city of Warren, we, our, will be in our agenda for the next month. We hope that collaborative we could find a way to do this. But it's this calendar year for planning and engineering, calendar year. There may be grants in Warren City Planning Development Department can find, but that's uncertain funding, and the timing on that might take some time. They have never gotten a project to the light at tax credit stage where it did not percent. So they do due diligence to make sure that the project goes forward. Again, the timeframe is short, but the, of all the things that we've seen, we were enthusiastic, we were grateful that the city challenged the EDA to be a part of this affordable housing solution. And we've made a, pretty, as a percentage of our assets, a pretty significant investment in the, with all the loan fund. But if you think about two things from this project, this seems a little different to me. Kit's the real estate guy, but one is the return on investment, and two is the amount of affordability. The, in Belmont, we've loaned money, a million dollars to a great project. It's an exciting thing that may be transforated for that neighborhood. That's a one million dollar loan. So that's tied up in twenty units, excuse me, thirty units, twenty percent of which must be affordable. So that's six affordable units. I think we've identified eight or four thousand. We're, I mean, we're, it's great, and we're enthusiastic about it, we're scratching the surface. This project is potentially eighty units, one hundred percent of this revenue. But the return on investment, so if you loan someone a million dollars, you tie up the capital, the money's gonna come back in the day, and we expect it to. But that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of capital that's tied up per affordable unit. This project, if it's eighty units, and we think it will be, it's thirty-six to sixty percent of the amount. The investment, if the city and EDA can figure, when they give some other organizations, can come up with five hundred thousand dollars, that's sixty-two hundred dollars. A hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for sixty-two hundred. Pretty remarkable difference. And, and we agree that that was a poor project, that that would have kind of afforded at this rate, and then affordable. I like considers a rent of a thousand and sixty-nine dollars for a one-bedroom unit in Warren City. That's, that's a lot of money, it's a lot of focus. In April, ArtSpace indicated that if built today, its sliding scale rent for a one-bedroom apartment would start at five hundred and fourteen dollars. Two-bedroom apartment for six hundred and seventeen dollars, and this is tomorrow. Three-bedroom apartment for seven hundred and thirteen dollars. That's affordable, that's affordable for most people, and hopefully there are other programs to hopefully save the net for those who are not, but that's thirty to sixty percent of the AMI. And most of these projects are eighty percent. And most of these projects are coupled, as a percentage, a small percentage of the units. It's just a hundred percent affordable. But it seems like we've got an opportunity collectively to figure out a way to solve. This is the biggest debt in the affordable housing opportunities, so hopefully we, over the next year, we all are, and we can figure out a way to work together, take advantage of what's really pretty amazing, opportunity from a company that is nonprofit, mission-driven, it's, they're not coming here to fail, they're gonna make a few cheap dollars off of us. They literally are driven by creating spaces to allow artists and florists, which involves healthy communities, which creates great spaces, which creates, thanks, and I appreciate your opportunity. I'm excited about us as a group to discuss it, and hopefully the city can get on the region.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question about it.
Go ahead.
So you said, in the notes, it said that Ed would be a willing participant in the pre-development. Is the same Ed we're talking about that's on the Riverdale project already?
Ed is the developer of the Riverdale project.
Okay, right, so that, same Ed we're talking.
And it would, I think.
It says that he would be a willing participant, is that with the funding, or?
I think he's gonna give them the land.
Give them the land, okay, I'm trying to figure out, trying to figure this out.
Yeah, but he needs to speak for himself, but he.
Okay, well, okay.
Yes, I, my understanding.
I can't speak to that, but he's encouraging, and this would be a big catalyst in Riverdale and really spark future developments, and, you know, future redevelopments of Riverdale, which it's gonna take the whole community to make this happen, but at some point, that's But at some point, that's going to be a city within a city over there, so.
Speaking for myself, that's my understanding.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just looking at the letter that came from Wendy Holmes, but I guess we could get some clarification on that because it really doesn't clarify that. But it says here that they would need about $450,000 for two phases, $150,000 in November. Is that this year?
The numbers I heard was up to 500,000. Commitment to 500,000 this year.
Okay, this is Wendy Holmes. She's the senior VP of ArtSpace Consulting. I'm just looking at her letter. And then another $150,000, I mean, another $300,000 in January, I'm guessing. So you're talking next month and then this coming January.
I mentioned the timeframe being tight a couple of times. It's a crazy tight time.
Yeah, that.
We'll know a little bit more at the next EDA meeting.
And do you mind to let me know exactly what its participation would be as far as pre-development? It said that it would, that his funding would make it. It said funding, but I'm saying what funding would make it, an early commitment to make it possible to move it quicker. What does that mean?
What was explained to me is that these projects typically have a municipal sponsor. And in this case, this project sort of came up organically. City staff was engaged and so was the developer of the surrounding development. And they kind of came up with this concept of how do we do this? And so I don't know if ArtSpace is, I can't speak for why they.
Right, sure. Sure, no, I don't.
But I think they want to, my guess is they're challenging us to see if we as a community will support our project.
No, just the timeframes are just real quick. And I'll be done in just a second. Mr. Nelson, can you tell me what the process is that you all use to determine which project you think is appealing or affordable or conducive for this area? How do you determine those projects? Because I'm sure you get a lot of them. I'm just trying to figure out which ones do you say, hey, this is a good one. This is one that we want to do.
Are you speaking in reference to affordable housing or projects in general?
Projects in general, through the EDA.
You know, generally it comes in two ways. One, there's usually a developer who comes and brings a project to us that we, if it gets to the point where the EDA is looking at funding it, it's usually gone through the channels of going up to the city manager's office and is thoroughly reviewed. In other cases, there are projects that come that we see. I can think of two right now, neither of which I can really discuss, that there's letters of intent out there to redevelop two old properties or that I think people see will be very, will be very satisfied with what they see. In those cases, we would go and generally engage the landowner and then see if we can find a team that can develop that project. Once we do that, again, it's fully vetted through the city manager's office and then we would bring something like that to the EDA. So it's a combination.
Oh, combination.
Sometimes it's the developer coming to us, other times it's us going out and finding some.
Oh, okay. And I look forward to hearing more about the ArtSpace.
There's nothing that we bring to this board that the city manager's office has not seen and usually this board has not seen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering what the process was. Bear has chomped up a bit.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you. You know, most of us who are in the economic development business have heard of ArtSpace. But let me just put a couple of things in perspective. When the Norfolk and Western dieselized in 1958 and the Visco's plant closed in 1958, we had 10,000 people out of work. We have never had that kind of a challenge in Roanoke since. The irony is that southeast was a middle-class, strong neighborhood. And I remember, because I went with my mom who took a blind lady to visit folks down there, the irony of it was it didn't take long at all for it to basically implode. Because either the folks at the Visco's or the Norfolk and Western were out of work and Bill Poe knows this better than I do because his wife just retired from being at the Presbyterian Community Center where I have the opportunity to be on the board. And we have watched this as folks trying to help those people in southeast for over 58 years. The kind of project we're talking about is the kind of project that can literally change a neighborhood. You would have thought initially when Ed Walker bought this property that it might not have had a housing component this quickly. When we did downtown development, trying to fix the market when I was on loan from Dominion Bancshares to the city for four and a half years, the one thing we knew that made the most difference in the development was downtown housing. Well, it didn't come for 25 years after we accomplished changing the market. Here you have it arriving almost on day one if this project can be facilitated. I can think of nothing more important in the entire city than the health of southeast and moving it forward in a fundamental way. I would only hope that we will understand the significance of it. And if the numbers work and everybody is trustworthy, that we would find a way to make this particular project happen. I know nothing about it other than what I've just heard this morning. But this is incredible. And it would go further than any other thing we have talked about in rejuvenating that neighborhood, which desperately needs help. So thanks to ArtSpace, thanks to Ed or whoever made the conduct, and thanks to the EDA for taking this up. Now, I know a couple of people on the board. I don't want to say anything derogatory, but I hope they show up and do the job on this one that they need to do. One of them's here and one of them's over there. Bottom line, folks, this is an incredible opportunity for us to do something major for not only southeast, but for the city itself. And I'd be glad to do anything I can to help you. Now, I can only vote until the end of December, so you better hurry up.
We've got to deal with this. It's a new opportunity.
It's a great idea.
Let me go to Vice Mayor and then I'll come back.
The city manager also has, I'm lax, you all go on.
Well, I'm really enthusiastic about this. I was able, and I think there may have been other council members, when ArtSpace came, there were, there was a really robust effort, outreach effort, not only to local artists, but to community members to engage in their focus groups and the idea behind this project. And they've been interested in Riverdale really since the beginning, looking at several different parts of the property. I think one of the reasons, one of the things I'm excited about is that they're so eager to move forward on this quickly. That's why the almost urgency of this, if you see up here, they have to submit low-income housing tax credits by March. That's, so if it doesn't happen now, it's waiting a year. And so the urgency for affordable housing, we're all very aware of. And so to see an organization like ArtSpace want to move that quickly is very encouraging just based on the success they've had nationally. I'm just wholeheartedly excited about this and appreciate you all working with Belmont Apartments. I mean, those two things together, along with the work we've done through ARPA with Restoration Housing and Habitat for Humanity, we're not only seeing new builds, but we're seeing significant renovation and significant investment in affordable housing in southeast, but in other parts of the city. So this is a real boost. Thank you.
Just add something on what Vice Mayor just said. So I agree and I appreciate the enthusiasm. I'm looking at it from a perspective of the timeframe and the amount of money that, and we're out of budget season, so that's the only reason I'm asking these questions because clearly we all think it's a wonderful idea, but you know, my thing is how do you pay for it? And so that's why I'm asking the questions. But do you, by any chance, Vice Mayor, know what Mr. Walker's commitment would be?
I don't know beyond the offer of land. I'm not sure at this point. So I'm, my understanding is.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how, if it could be done, how.
Probably come before the EDA and then a recommendation to us.
Yeah.
If you know business, Lindsay, you get a bridge loan.
Well, I'm just trying to figure it out because it is a wonderful idea, but you know, things cost money and we'll have to figure it out.
Councilman, Vice Board, we'd be willing to get that information and bring it to the interim city manager.
Okay.
I agree. I agree with the fact that let's find out what it costs. And also, we're tied at the hip with Mr. Walker right now, so I want to know what his role is. So those are some things that I have, those concerns that I have. That is not a good idea, but.
Peter's having a fit over here.
We just need to find out some more facts. Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Wilson, that wasn't, he was over here. You didn't see him. You didn't see him over here. He was doing all kinds of stuff.
I just wanted to, first off, I wanted to thank you, Duke, for bringing that forward and talking about that, about the ArtSpace project. I've seen ArtSpace projects in Baltimore, Providence, and other cities, and I know how impactful they can be to an area, especially when we're trying to do what we're doing at Riverdale, which is boosting our arts community. So I really appreciate the work y'all are doing on this. Again, I'll reiterate that, you know, we just need to answer to these questions, but I think that, you know, all of us are very excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wallace.
All right. Dr. Pat.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council and the EDA. Coming here five months ago and learning about ArtSpace, this project has been worked or progressing for 18 months. It is not new in that they have had a ArtSpace committee working and Mr. Walker and his, I would say, management or whatever team has been working. Where we are now and coming to Roanoke, one of the first asks were, and from you, the members of council, what's going to happen in Riverdale? What are we doing in Riverdale? And this proposal right here is a catalyst that, as it indicates, take not only Roanoke but Riverdale and the projects, and it speaks to having a town square. It would just change the whole complexity of a city. One of the things I have asked, and I've been working with Mr. Spencer, is that, and I know the investment of the city in the Riverdale project, is for myself to meet with Mr. Ed Walker. And Mr. Spencer has said we will make that happen. We're waiting on a contract for the A and E building to be signed, should be signed by October 15th. And with that said, I am sure Mr. Walker would meet with me, along with city attorney and our economic development director, to bring more information to you as soon as we possibly can. But this, this is an amazing project for our city to receive. And when I think about why Roanoke, everything that I've seen, every hall I walked down, all of the creativeness that's in this city, it's a catalyst for art. And you can't find that anywhere across the Commonwealth. So I will do everything possible to get information back to you as soon as possible. If I can get it as early as next week or by the end of the week, I shall.
Thank you, Dr. Pat.
I do have one, a couple more things to present if that's okay. Just a couple more slides. There is one other thing we wanted to bring to your attention because the EDA has really stepped into the breach on this one. One of the things that, the enterprise zone is great and it provides a lot of incentive to developers, to building owners, to people who own property. Sometimes it cannot touch the businesses as much as we would like them to. The businesses often rent the property. They get the benefit of the facade grant, but, you know, and having a nice building to be in, but often there'll be things that happen that they need help with directly. And sometimes enterprise zone benefits, although they're very generous, real estate point of view, don't help them practically when they, when they most need it. So one of the things that the EDA has stepped forward with is, is the Business Equipment Incentives Program. And basically, that is what you'd see right there. It's the authority will have grants, it'd be up to 50% of eligible equipment purchases with a maximum award of 20,000 per grant. It's a pool of $400,000 that we've broken up over two years, 200 the first and 200 the second. They've agreed through their discussions and the instruction to us is that at the end of the first year, we stop, take a look at who got the grants, how the program is working, and decide how to go forward with the second year. This is one of these things, I think, you know, when you look at the requirements, you have to be operating at least one year in a commercial zone location. You have to employ at least two W-2 employees and you have to be in good standing with the city's, with the city's tax, tax office. And one of the things that this does for us is when you look at some of the things, especially when you look at areas over in Wasina, if a piece of equipment breaks, let's say the coffee shop, it costs $10,000 to repair. It's not something they can always necessarily get right away. So this at least gives them the idea that the city is going to step in and help with some of these investments by recompensating them for half of the costs. It's a very innovative approach and it's, as you can see, it's going to, the purchase must occur on or after November 1st, 2024. It must be purchased, it must be purchased and assessed in the business for a property tax item and the grants are 50/50 matched. So I think that this is something really innovative that this board has been able to do with support from the city to really help businesses now. So that's the last thing I wanted to point out. And I'm open to any questions you have for me or for the board and.
Bev? Mark, excellent presentation. And as you and I've talked, my history in economic development is more around prospects for the future of more industrial than anything else. I'm interested in where we stand. I know we're getting ready to do that new plot in the Roanoke Center for Industry and Technology, which is fantastic. Are we receiving a decent number of prospects? And I can relate directly to when Richmond Boys or the Governor's Office and now Virginia Economic Development Partnership does not always like to travel west of Short Pump to be of aid in creating jobs. Now, that doesn't mean all of, but it, I know exactly what that means. How are we doing in our relationship with them and are they being helpful and are you seeing traffic regularly?
Councilman Fitzpatrick, yes, we are. I would say whatever, whatever your partisan politics are, we've seen an uptick in the number of inquiries that we've gotten through the Roanoke Regional Partnership over the last four years. What happens a lot is that these tend to be larger industrial users that need 50, 80, 100 acres of land. And we generally inside the city don't have anything that large. That is why the 82-acre site at Track 8 in RCIT is so important because it's going to give us an 82-acre site. There's the Woodhaven Site, which we jointly own with the county. That's 100 acres. It's over in the county. It's a great site. It is getting all kinds of attention. Since we've gotten this grant, the announcement's been made, we've had four companies inquire, including two Fortune 500 companies, about that site. So the interest in Roanoke is strong. It's just sometimes you have to have the, you have to have the right mix of things. You have to have the right site in the right place. And so, yes, there has been enough ticking inquiries.
We used to get tickled if you had the right site, they would look. If you had the right people trained for the employees they wanted, you were good. And then after that, it could have been where the chairman's daughter went to college. If it was Hollins', we were always helping. And I'm serious, sometimes it works that way. But you all are doing a great job and to have these added incentives for small businesses is something I never, you know, knew about. We didn't have them back in those days. But thank you all for a job well done and continuing to work on a regional basis. I would hope, and we developed this during New Century, the Woodhaven Concept came out of the New Century Council, which I was fortunate enough to run. There are many opportunities to do some more of those because as a city, we know we do not have land and we've got to work those deals where we can get taxes, taxes from outside the city itself to support our citizens. So, you know, obviously if the council can do anything to help you, anytime you let us know. But thanks for a great report.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other? All right.
Good morning, Mr. Nelson. How many businesses have applied for a grant?
This program launches November 1st, so it has not been opened up yet.
Oh, okay. It's November 1st. Okay.
But you know, there's strong interest in it. We've had a number of businesses that have inquired about it already. And so, and we're starting it on November 1st because that is the time after the discussion this board had to stand it up, make sure the details are correct, make sure we're in line with. One of the really helpful things, as the Commissioner of the Revenue Office pointed out to us, they said, you know, when they buy this piece of equipment, even if you rebate half the cost back, they still have to pay taxes on the whole thing. So you want to make sure they're aware of it. So they've been working with us to get the right paperwork to make sure that when we talk to people about this and go through that process, we're able to vet everything so they know exactly what they're getting into. And that's why the November 1st deadline, that's why we put it out a couple of months so we can make sure we had things lined up. We don't want anyone to be surprised when they get this.
And how are people going to find out about this grant opportunity?
We've already put it out on our social media. We've worked with Carol Corbett in the communications office here. We've generally word of mouth, business visits, any way that we can.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Board again.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to ask because we never ask them, is there anything that we can do, talking to the authority, to help with the processes or what you all are doing? we can do, talking to the authority, to help with the processes or what you all are doing? Do you have any questions for us? Because some of you I'm only seeing for the first time, and I just would like for you to have that opportunity if you have some questions or...
Yeah, we're honored to have the engagement and just continuing the conversation in the future, you know, more frequent than we probably have in the past would be wonderful.
I think so.
If anybody has any questions or thoughts, now's a wonderful time.
Yes, please. Any thoughts?
I do have one thing that I think would be, would be helpful, and if I can speak on behalf of the EDA. Despite our begging and pleading, Mr. Poe has refused to stay. When his term is done, he's going to be rolling off. We have one vacancy that will be coming starting in November, and I think you have four applications in front of you.
We do, we do.
You know, if there's anything you need from this group, I think they would be happy to provide any insight.
Thank you, Bill. You've been there a long time.
Yes. Thank you all for coming.
All right.
The meeting not over yet. Hold on, man. We don't go home. Is it, I want to wait, my concern is waiting to hear from you again after you talk with Ed Walker.
Oh, yes, I will. As soon as I can make contact, I shall. Meet and get back.
Okay.
May I ask, Mr. Whiteboy, one question? I hope the rest of the authority hasn't brought with it. We have very little funding. We fund, this, this grant program is out of income that we generated from the funds we place. And so, and you will fund lots of great projects that are, that come through us. But thinking strategically, is there a way that we could create a little bit of a pool of money that could do more things like, this grant money will run out, there's a finite amount of money. If it is successful, what are the things we could do? Just, I don't know, but keep meeting, like Braxton said, just to think about creative ways that we, I feel like we turn money over very efficiently, very thoughtful, and we just love to have a little more cash than we have in the bank.
And see, that's what I mean. Thank you for putting that on our radar, because if you, you know, we, we need to hear from you, and we appreciate you meeting, and thank you for, for sharing that.
A lot of EDAs are funded by the locality, and we are self-funded, and we have a very fixed amount of income that we don't really, we haven't been able to raise over the years through, like, we have good investment income, but we don't really own real estate or divulged real estate. It's things we can do and potentially will be doing in the future, you know, maybe even in the innovation corridor kind of thing. But a funding stream to do things like affordable housing and other important projects in needy parts of the city, you know, would be wonderful. So that conversation of, of a funding stream from the locality is something that has been talked about amongst ourselves for a long time, but it's never been able to be put forward.
Well, I'm glad I asked the question, and I hope you all will come back more often. It just makes sense to have a regular conversation, see where we are and what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're honored to be here.
Is there another part to this with the RCIT?
There is a second, a second, a second presentation. It's not necessarily an EDA presentation, but if they'd like to stay in here, they're welcome to. Sorry.
I want to say.
Have y'all talked to Dominion Risk Advisors about some donations?
Constantly, but they keep just putting us out.
We have gone out to some community partners, both financial institutions and nonprofits, to try to get ahead of this, because we realize it can't all be EDA and city funding. It's going to take a whole team effort, and it's going to have to happen fast. So there's been a lot of legwork done by individuals like are here today to try to get this going and try to meet this timeline, to get it in front of Virginia Housing.
Dr. Pat?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I have not met with the EDA. However, in previous cities who I've served, the city manager sits on the EDA as also with the finance director. And what I'd like to do, since we're in the beginning of talking about budget, meet with this team and just see how you are organized and exactly what funding source that you do have. Because at every meeting that I have been to, being on a EDA, EDA authority, there is a report from the finance director as to the funds of the EDA. And so I will make sure I set that up very soon, because we don't like to hear EDA saying that they don't have any money.
We, we have, we have some money. We just don't, we have a fixed amount of income.
Say that it was finite, it ain't, it's not unlimited.
We'll continue the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, is that all you have?
That's the totality of this particular presentation. Whether you all want to discuss anything additional is up to you.
Okay. Let me thank you all for your service on this committee. As you go out the door, Mr. Poe, I'm going out the door too. So I don't think I'll be, well, I know I won't be here for the next meeting, but thank you all for your commitment and dedication to what we've been doing.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's not, not as fun as watching me fumble buttons.
Well, you know, whatever. Whatever you need.
Yeah. It works better too if you have notes, but if you don't have those... Dr. Patton, are you ready for me to start on this as well? Okay. Well, hello again. We wanted to bring you an update on the Roanoke Center for Industry and Technology. I can actually wait until Councilman Sanchez Jones returns.
Okay, it's closed.
Okay. Well, good morning again. We wanted to take this moment to give you an update on the Roanoke Center for Industry and Technology. I think for anyone who's not available, not familiar with that, I think this board is. The, the center is, it's called RCIT for short. It is located on 460 as you go east towards Lynchburg. We just wanted to give a brief overview of, of things, of how things are progressing out there. So basically, an overview of it and the history and the status of the Roanoke Center for Industry and Technology. We're going to give you an update on the last mile center, the distribution center for Amazon, and then talk a little bit about the Track Eight Grant Award that we received recently. So it's a city-owned industrial park. It's adjacent to 460, 3.5 miles from Interstate 581, developed in 1980 and expanded in 1992. It's 440 acres, like it says, right next to, right next to Route 60, and it's owned I-1, which is light industrial. As you can see, there are several well-known businesses that find, that have their, their home out there. Elizabeth Arden, Info Seal, Orvis, Advance Auto, and in, in later this fall, Amazon will open their facility as well. So facts and figures, there's about 2,000 total employees. Obviously, those numbers fluctuate with hiring and seasonal and things like that. There is a Creative Kids Childcare, which is a childcare center which offers facility to the industrial park. There are two Valley Metro bus stops, and I have to say, the GRTC has been fantastic work within establishing those and putting shelters out there. And there's about 5,000 total daily car trips. There are 15 tracks total, 12 that are developed. There are two that are available, Tracks A and B. Just I'll walk over here real quick. These are the tracks we're talking about right here. This is the Amazon site, this large one, and then B and A are right there. They are relatively small, they're combined about 19 acres. They, they are the sum total of the available land that will be left after Track Eight is developed. Like, you know, there's a listing again of some of the companies that are in there. One, Bimbo Bakeries, has two national bakeries. There's this one and one in Folsom, California. So the one that they have here is very important. You have to pretty much be presidential level clearance to be able to get into that building. They do some amazing things over there. Virginia Transformer Corporation, they have a presence over on Glade View where they have, where they manufacture. This is where their office location is, they have a location in Batata County as well, and they are aggressively looking to expand, so that, they, they are very happy over there. So we have some pretty heavyweight companies there. So the major investments, the Amazon Delivery Station, it's a last mile distribution facility. They purchased 48 acres from, from DeChutes. It's about a $50 million investment with about 200 jobs, and it's scheduled to be operational later. I think their, their goal is to have it open prior to Christmas. When, when you were talking, Councilman Fitzpatrick, about, about having the, being the right place, right time, it is the only time in my career where I was, I talked with the CEO of DeChutes at like 2:30 in the afternoon, and at 2:33, I got a call from someone going, we need, we're trying to look at these two tracks next to the DeChute site, you know, and, you know, can you, can you help us find some land? And I said, who are you with? She goes, I think you know who I'm with. And, you know, and, and I said, I said, would you be interested in the DeChute site? And she said, yes, we would. And then by 3 o'clock, they had an LOI. It's the only time it's ever happened.
I'm glad you weren't at lunch.
Yeah. I don't take lunch. So the track date description basically said, this is the other large developable site. It's on the other side of the park. It is 82 acres. Just an overview, we went to the state two years ago to obtain about $85,000 for a planning study. We brought in AECom, and they did a great feasibility study on whether you could develop a site over there. With the city manager's blessing, we moved forward with the larger, the larger application process. The, the project cost is about $10 million. And so we got, this past year, there was about 5, 500 million in requests, they had 120 million to give out, and they gave us 7.5 with a 2.5 city match to be able to develop this site. So the building potential maximum size is 400,000 square feet. The yield at per acre is 48.78. It's zoned, it's owned light industrial. It will be the last major developable site that we have out there, but it's 82 acres. And like I said earlier, we've already had interest from four companies about it. So this is an idea of what that expansion would look like. That is the footprint for, that's for 300,000 square foot building. We've been working with transportation and engineering, both of whom have been fantastic in helping us work at the logistics on that. The first phase, which we received, this board approved, performance agreement with the state, which is $200,000, and that will allow us to retain a design professional and start layout of the site. Engineering has been great in handling the RFP process for that, and they're in the process of going through that now. This is the option for a 400,000 square foot building. You can see there's kind of a different layout there. The, the road going in and out would be a, would be the same sort of logistical layout, it's just the footprint of the building that would change. So the project description, as I said earlier, we received 7.5 million from the state, the city's match would be about 2.5 million. A portion of that would be from surplus funds that we identified in the economic development budget. And you can see going through there some of the estimated costs, about 25,000 for design, you know, construction will be about 125,000 for the geotechnical reports. The actual construction itself will be broken out into two parts, 2.9 for construction of the, of the access road, and then, and 6.7 for the, for the, to finish the pad site. So the business case for Track Eight is that it's the last undevelopable tract of land, undeveloped tract of land. It's one of only two publicly owned sites in the region that can accommodate buildings of 350,000 plus square feet. It's a cost savings due to readily accessible utilities right there, both gas and water and electric are all nearby. The return on investment that we would be seeking is in the neighborhood of 200 jobs and $100 million investment. The big business case market demand, when you mentioned earlier, sir, about the, about the requests we've gotten through the, through the state, those are examples of some of the requests that we've gotten that we have not been able to compete in because we don't have sites that are large enough. You can see that's generally 60 to 70 acres, what the investments and the jobs are. This would put us in play for, for one of these projects. So the timeline is that the permitting would start pretty much, you know, we're going through that process now of selecting a design professional. It would be a six to eight permitting process. The bidding and solicitation for contract would take three months, and construction would be about 10 to 12 months. If there's a concurrent, that, that would be about a 22 month total timeline. On a concurrent 20 month timeline, if everything went well, we could kind of shrink that down to about 20 months, but honestly, I think we're looking more at 22 month timeline, just given the permitting and the selection process. And, you know, I think everyone knows, once you get out there and start opening up a site, there's things in there that you never anticipate seeing. We're building in as much time as we think we need to be able to handle that.
Mark, if I may for one second.
Yes, sir.
When we brought Gardner Denver, we competed with Natchez, Douches, Texas. We were building forms for the foundation on one end while they were grading on the other end. So can be done.
Can be done, yes, sir. So that's the general overview of RCIT. I wanted to be able to bring that to you. Dr. Patton had said, you know, it's been some time since you've had an update on it. We wanted to bring that to you, just give you a general overview of what we have going on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're going, there are no more speakers, we're going to go ahead and reconvene in a meeting. Hi, we have a communication from my office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia at the minute. Need a motion?
So moves.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please call her over?
Mayor, is there another presentation for the unhoused now?
That's after this.
It's after this? Okay.
Listen.
No.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's after this.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's after this.
It's following this.
We got to come back in, yes, another presentation, but we got to come back in session.
Yes.
All right.
Who made the motion on this item?
I did.
And seconded by Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll call the roll now, Mayor.
All right.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And a motion passes. Thank you. There's a communication from the city attorney's office requesting that the city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding actual litigation for such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia. I need a motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call her over.
All right. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And a motion passes. Thank you. Are there any items listed on the 2 o'clock council docket requiring discussion, clarification, or any additions or deletions in the topic by my office or members of the council? Hang on. Then we will move right down to briefings, and now comes, I'll call on Dr. Patton to introduce the briefing.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. We will have this morning a briefing on the current state of the unhoused community. The presenters will be Mr. Matt Crookshank, Mr. Lee Clark, and Mr. Brian Burnett. They have prepared this presentation on the current state of the unhoused community. If we could ask those gentlemen to come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm Matt Crookshank, I'm the Human Services Administrator with the city, so I lead our homeless assistance team, and I work with our community partners in our response to homelessness and working with folks that are unhoused in the community. So we prepared a presentation to give you all an update, really on our current efforts, our current data. We've got our summer 2024 point in time count data that we'll be presenting to you all. And then we'll talk through some of our, our current efforts, some of our challenges, and then ways that you all may be able to help support our work. So Brian Burnett with the Council of Community Services is going to walk us through some of our point in time count data, and then Lee Clark and myself will talk more about the challenges, our current work, and some of our asks of you all. So, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to share with you this morning. If you're not familiar with the point in time count, it is an annual required count of all homeless individuals in our area mandated by HUD. But as a community, our continuum of care also chooses to do a second one in the summer, and so that's where this data comes from. So we conducted our summer point in time count on the night of July 15th this year. We counted 342 individuals who were experiencing homelessness on that night. night. Two hundred and sixty-five of those were in shelter. We generate that data through our homeless management information system, and it's based on people who actually checked in for a bed on that night. And we counted seventy-seven unsheltered individuals. Our unsheltered data is collected through a survey process where we send out outreach teams to known campsites and other places where we might find people who are experiencing homelessness, and they consent to tell us where they slept that night and then answer questions as part of the survey. For the sheltered individuals, they were at multiple providers on the night of the pit count. There were thirteen individuals at Family Promise, two hundred and twelve at the Rescue Mission. There were eighteen participating in the TAP Domestic Violence Shelter Program, twenty-two at the Salvation Army, Army Turning Point Shelter, and then, of course, we counted seventy-seven who were unsheltered. This gives you a look at our summer pit count data over the last five years, and as you can see, the trend is definitely going up from previous years. And we did skip over twenty-twenty because there was no summer pit count conducted that year due to the pandemic. The next few slides are some demographic data based on the surveys of just the unsheltered individuals. There were seventy-seven respondents, but the percentages represented may not, it only includes the people who actually answered the question. They could have declined to answer. So of the unsheltered individuals, seventy-four percent were male, twenty-three percent were female, and three reported that they were transgender. Breakdown by race, there were sixty-eight percent were white, twenty-three percent were black or African-American, five percent were multiracial, three percent Native American and one percent Pacific Islander. Seven percent were young adults, age eighteen to twenty-four. The majority, eighty-four percent, were adults aged twenty-five to sixty-four, and nine percent were over the age of sixty-five. There were six unsheltered veterans on the night of the summer pit count, twenty survivors of domestic violence, and we asked them to self-report their substance use status. So two percent reported alcohol use, sixteen percent alcohol and drug use, twenty-nine percent drugs, and fifty-three percent no substance use. In order to confirm that they are unsheltered, we have to ask them, where did you sleep last night? And those answers provided allow us to confirm they were unsheltered. So these are the actual physical locations that they reported that they were in on the night of the pit. Almost forty-two percent said they slept on the streets or a sidewalk, thirty-five percent were in the woods or an outdoor encampment, almost twelve percent said they slept in a vehicle that night, five percent were in one of our parks, two percent in an abandoned building or house, and two point six percent under a bridge or overpass. We also asked them to identify what they think is their primary reason for being homeless at this time. The two most given answers were relationship conflicts and loss of job. And some important things I think we can take from the answers to this question, if you combine loss of job with things like unaffordable housing, underemployment, and low income, clearly affordable rent and income not keeping up with rent increases is a huge reason why we have an increase in homelessness. And then you can pair that with the answer of relationship conflict or death of a family or friend, and doubled up and must leave. All of those indicate that prior to becoming homeless, there's a large number of people who are in an unstable housing situation. They're living with other people, so that makes it very easy for them to fall into homelessness because of that. And finally, we ask individuals, what is the zip code of the last address where you rented or owned a home? Sixty-five percent of those who responded said they lived in Roanoke City prior to becoming homeless. Five percent reported living in another one of our COC's localities, which is Roanoke County in Salem, and thirty percent reported that they came from a locality outside of our areas. And the majority of those were the state of Virginia, somewhere in the state of Virginia. One thing I would note about that is, a lot of times when you ask that question, for some homeless individuals who have been homeless for an extended period of time, the zip code of their last address could have been ten years ago, and they've been transient since then. So most, I think most of the people are here in Roanoke when they begin to experience homelessness. And finally, I wanted to show you, this is the trend of our pit counts, both winter and summer, over the last five years. Especially the last three years, there's been an upward trend in homelessness. It's, it is growing in our area. But we should keep it in perspective that twenty-twelve was the highest year on record of our pit data, and we're still not up to that level. We counted five hundred and sixty-one people during the winter pit count of that year. So it's growing, but we're still not at our worst. So now I'm gonna turn things over to Matt, and he's gonna share some of our current community outcomes data and talk about some of the current things that we're doing to tackle homelessness.
All right. So one of the data points we wanted to share with you all, we track a whole spectrum of community outcome measures monthly through our COC board meetings and our planning meetings. One of the positive trends that we've seen over the last about five years is the return rate. So when folks exit the homelessness, how frequently they come back into homelessness after two years of being exited. So that rate has decreased from twenty-seven percent in twenty-eighteen to fifteen percent in fiscal year twenty-three, which just ended the end of October. So even though we're starting to see, or we have seen the last couple of years, an increase in our overall numbers, the folks that are exiting our system are returning less frequently, and I think that's a result of some of the intentional interventions that we put in place, how we're connecting folks to services that are really helping stabilize folks when they move into permanent housing. So on the flip side, our first-time homeless is another metric that we track. So we've seen about a hundred and forty-seven percent increase in first-time homelessness since twenty-twenty, and I think this ties directly with some of the points Brian mentioned and our primary reasons for homelessness. Housing right now just is not affordable for lower-income households. So folks that haven't been homeless in the past, that haven't experienced crisis the last couple of years, those types of households are who, who we're seeing slip into homelessness just because housing's so unaffordable right now in the community. So a couple of quick points on some of the housing affordability challenges. So this stat is from rent.com. So for a one-bedroom household, we did a comparison of September twenty-four compared to September of twenty-three. A one-bedroom, rent for a one-bedroom apartment is increased by two hundred and forty-three dollars. So about almost twenty-seven percent just over one year. Fair market rent rates, which is, that's a rate that's set by HUD, and it's a comparison of all rents being charged in the region. So we looked back six years on the HUD fair market rent rate for a one-bedroom apartment. So in twenty-twenty-five, the current rent for a one-bedroom unit's nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Compared to twenty-nineteen, it was six hundred and forty-six dollars. So a three hundred and two dollar increase over six years, which is nearly forty-seven percent. The U.S. Government Accountability Office has estimated that for every one hundred dollar increase in median rent in a community, homelessness typically increases by nine percent. So what we're seeing reflected in our numbers really is tied to the increase in rent. Housing, like I said, just really is not affordable for low-income households right So this chart is the income of folks that we serve, and we pulled this from our coordinated entry data. So everyone that got assessed through our coordinated entry system over the last twelve months, we pulled their income. So almost sixty percent of the folks in our system have no income, ten percent have earned income, so they have at least a part-time job or some kind of employment income source. Fifteen point four percent were on disability income. Or actually, if you add the ten point six and the fifteen point four, about a quarter of the folks are on limited income with disability. And then five percent have some sort of other income source, which could be TANF, spousal support, social security retirement income. So the vast majority of our folks are on extremely limited income, but about ten percent do have employment. So just as a comparison for those rent numbers that we just looked at, currently in twenty-twenty-four, the average person that's on disability income gets about nine hundred and forty-three dollars. So that's not even enough to pay for a one-bedroom unit in our city right now. And that tied to our, our numbers for our coordinated entry data, that's about twenty-five percent of the people that are experiencing homelessness in our community. So those people, they just can't afford a one-bedroom apartment. The average income for folks that are employed and homeless right now is almost seventeen hundred dollars a month. So even those individuals, they're working, but still, they're really strapped to be able to make ends meet, to be able to afford even a one or, or a two-bedroom unit in the This chart shows our housing placements over the last five years. So in twenty-eighteen, we had about twenty-two hundred folks that were housed without a rental subsidy, so they didn't have a voucher. They weren't being exited to a public housing unit. It was just market-rate housing that they were paying for themselves. About six hundred and ninety-two were exited with a subsidy of some sorts, some type of voucher or subsidized housing. So compared that to twenty-twenty-three, almost half of our housing placements were folks that we were able to connect with a housing voucher or some type of rental subsidy to make their rent more affordable. And I think that's a connection to the rates of returns that we've seen decrease in over time. We've really made a concentrated effort to net, connect clients to some sort of subsidy so that market-rate housing that right now isn't affordable becomes affordable with that voucher or some side of, some sort of subsidy to help them afford rent. Some of our current successes, so we're in the process right now of leasing up fourteen new units that are gonna be permanent supportive housing partnerships. It's actually a development in southeast, I think, that was mentioned in the Economic Development Authority meeting. So those fourteen units are currently being leased. It's gonna be a partnership with Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare and Commonwealth Catholic Charities. So each of those programs will have seven units. They'll lease those units to clients in permanent supportive housing. So these will be units where the client gets a rental subsidy, so their, their rent portion will be based on their income, and then they'll have intensive case management services through those programs to make sure they're able to stabilize in those units. And we try to target our permanent supportive housing resources really to our clients in our system that need that intensive service. So we have a whole process for assessing clients. When they come into our coordinated entry system, we gauge what their service needs are, and then we try to match them with housing opportunities that really are designed to meet their needs. So these will be dedicated to some of our chronically homeless individuals that have long history of homelessness with really intensive service needs. So we're excited about those units, and these are the first of the fifty new units that are being developed with the ARPA funds that, that you all helped provide. HAT, we're currently doing move-in assistance for clients when they locate housing to help them pay security deposits or any type, overcome any type of barrier they may have to moving into that unit. So we started using those ARPA funds back in January, and we've helped sixty households move into permanent housing with those dollars. So right now, with the housing market being so tight, especially the rental market, landlords tend to charge double deposits for clients that may be a little more high-risk. So we're able to use these ARPA funds to pay those double deposits, what really, really helps those clients move into housing that they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford all those upfront costs. So we've helped sixty households since January and spent about sixty-six thousand dollars on those move-in assistance resources. This year, we've already housed over two hundred individuals directly from unsheltered homelessness, so this is the third consecutive year that we've housed two hundred or more individuals directly off our streets and placed them in permanent housing through the HAT program and our other outreach partners. So we're only about three-quarters of the year in, the calendar year, and we still have already hit that two hundred mark in twenty-twenty-four. So we're bringing on additional partners into our coordinated entry process and expanding permanent supportive housing. Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, right now, we're working out a process to directly match individuals on our community queue, our coordinated entry list, to those permanent supportive housing resources to make sure we have kind of a full spectrum of the housing resources that individuals are eligible for, and then matching them with the most appropriate resource. So having those extra permanent supportive housing units in our coordinated entry system just makes our system more efficient. It helps us make sure those resources are really going to the individuals that need them. We've transitioned, actually, three of our permanent supportive housing grants that were HUD-funded to a new provider over the last two years. So a program in the community closed in January of twenty-twenty-three, and we worked to get those grants transitioned. We released an RFP and used some ARPA funds to help transition those grants to the new provider, which is Commonwealth Catholic Charities. So they've been doing a great job in making sure those resources are available for our community. All right, and I'll turn it over to Lee to talk about some opportunities.
Thank you, Matt. You know, one of the greatest opportunities we have and one of the greatest successes we have is the level of cooperation that we have among all our providers in the community. Today with us, we've got a number of folks that are members of our continuum of care and our BRIC, our Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness. And if you would just stand, if you're a part of that network, we'd like to recognize you all. Great work amongst a lot of folks who are coming together to make all the successes that Matt has talked about possible. How can you help? One of the ways in which we've been working with, with Angie O'Brien, her team, and others with the city is, how can we provide transportation during the day to get people greater access to daytime services? Get them kind of out of our core area downtown, but into productive services that can make a difference. One of the things we've just started a few months ago at the Rescue Mission is transportation from our overnight emergency shelter over to Ram to the day shelter. We'd like to be able to make that consistent. Right now, it's kind of patched together with volunteers and with a van. Literally, our, our volunteers and our staff are making four to five trips in the morning to get folks from the Rescue Mission to Ram House to the day shelter, and then back in the afternoon. We'd like to make consistent seven-day-a-week transportation a reality, and not just between our two agencies, but to the HAT team, to Blue Ridge, to the Disability Social Security Office, all those service providers that make a difference in helping a person move from being unsheltered quickly to being able to find housing, employment, stability. So that's very important, and we'd love to see our city get behind us on that effort and to help us with funding. We have a, we have a plan, we have a budget, we have a lot of work that has been done to get us to where we are today. We need about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to make that a reality, with staffing and transportation on a seven-day-a-week basis, and would love to have your support and help. I feel like that's very achievable. Another opportunity for our city is to advocate for state-funded voucher programs. There are about five thousand families in the pilot program. We'd like to utilize state funds to supplement the federal voucher programs, and that will require advocacy on the part of our city to our state to make that happen, and we'd love for you all to help us with that and get behind us on that effort. And then finally, when we look at affordable housing and the great need for affordable housing, let's expand the revolving loan fund for moderate to low-income housing by identifying a dedicated revenue source. It could be a portion of permit fees, real estate tax, a support from the business community that will help developers who want to provide low-income housing for our city. I think during the rezoning process recently, we heard that there were about four thousand to five thousand unit deficit that is needed in our city. That is huge. So what can we do to close that gap and be proactive in making that a possibility? So those are some of the ways in which council can assist. Some others, continuing support for rezoning. We appreciate the support from the city in making that happen. We'd like to see new housing development. Continue support for our comprehensive housing strategy implementation. So on average, building of one hundred affordable rental units in the U.S. creates about a hundred and sixty local jobs and generates one point seven million in income, as well as two point two million in taxes in just the first year. And that's from the National Low Income Housing Coalition. So it clearly has a dramatic impact, not just on the health of our community, but in the viability and economic, economic benefits for our entire community. So with that, the three of us, and as well as the other partners in the room, are available to take any questions that you have.
I wish you all had came when we were talking about rezoning.
Yeah.
And made that presence here. See, we had to fight that battle, that battle ourselves, but it's still an ongoing conversation. I'm sure you go to...
We did have representatives speak at one of the, the opening...
Public hearing.
Yep. We certainly did.
I spoke at the first round, and then we had another. Kathleen spoke at the second round, yes.
We needed about twenty more of them.
Thank you.
We'll sit in the hall.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Volson.
I just had a quick question. If I'm not mistaken, I saw that the voucher program has stopped for the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our, our housing authority, they've, I think they've leased up enough vouchers to where they can afford to fund the rental assistance that's attached in the vouchers. So they actually put a pause on new referrals, because we've got a homeless preference for voucher referrals with our continuum of care, with our coordinated entry process. So they actually put a pause on new referrals back in May for us as they work through their public waiting list, and then just within the last couple of weeks, I think... And then just within the last couple of weeks, I think they paused all new voucher leasing until they get more federal funds to cover their deficit.
They said the rent increase has also ate their budget up.
Right.
That's what I understand. So my question then becomes, what happens, what's the knock-on effect of something like that for y'all?
It's huge. Yeah, it's huge for us. So those, the numbers we showed to the folks that exited with the subsidy, they're not going to have that resource now until those, that voucher process opens again. So that's why we put in the request for state funding. The state, last year, the General Assembly put in, I think, a line item in the budget to fund a pilot project that would be a state-funded voucher program that would supplement the federal program. So it would bring state dollars, which would help close some of that gap. I think nationally, only about 1 in 5 folks that qualify for a federal voucher actually receive it. So only about 25%. So that has a huge impact on the number of people that experience homelessness, but it also makes it more difficult for us to exit folks to housing because right now, the market just isn't affordable without a subsidy for most folks.
Another question I have is a little different area is with that rezoning that we did get through, part of it was that, you know, group homes and other situations like that are able to be more places around the city. Is that something that y'all are looking at and how we might be able to help people in different parts of the city?
Yeah, and I know Wayne's here with the planning department, but what we looked at with the HomeSafe units, so those are the 50 units that we've set ARPA funds aside, the strategy for those units is really to disperse those throughout the city so that we're not concentrating folks in any particular neighborhood. So trying to be mindful on how we develop units and where we place folks, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, I want to just say thank you for the presentation, and it's always nice for our residents to hear from you, and because people think, you know, what are you doing? And they really think we're not doing anything, but clearly, we are. It's just, it's ongoing, and so we're doing everything that we possibly can. The only thing, Matt, you set your ARPA funds, you're using it, a lot of it for double deposits. I know with our ARPA and everybody else's is pretty much depleted, and, you know, that pool of money has pretty much dissipated, but do you still have funding from ARPA?
Yeah, we actually got our MOU extended through June of '26, so we'll be able to use those ARPA funds.
Oh, wonderful.
It's not paying for staff time, it's just going directly to clients that are moving into housing.
That's still, that's still awesome, yeah.
Yeah, so we're grateful for that.
Okay, I was wondering about that. Again, thank you to all of us. And you know, I start naming people, I see everybody out there working hard, Dawn, Melissa, everybody. Just thank you for what you all are doing. Thank you.
I just want to also thank you. Most people in Roanoke do not understand this problem, and they prefer to throw arrows at it than to try to understand it and then try to help us work with the folks. And all three of you, and I know Lee more directly than I do Brian and Matt, but we're extremely appreciative of what you do and the patience that you must have personally to deal with this on a regular basis. It takes a really special kind of person to do this. I am familiar with family promise, because Second Presbyterian, where I go to church, has, you know, just put together a unit. And I do want you to know how much, you know, you need to keep us informed. I was shocked when I read the Roanoke Times digital edition the other day and saw the new numbers. Maybe not so surprised after driving around town, because there is a visible increase. But thank you for what you do, and please let us know. I know there's no magic bullet, but boy, do we admire you all and your staff and all the folks in the community that have given of themselves to do this, because it's an ongoing thing. I mean, when I look at San Francisco and Los Angeles and Portland, and now you've got this new thing from the Supreme Court that says you can't do this, but where are you going to go? You know, you have nowhere to go. And I'm not smart enough to be of help to you, but I'll try if you give me an opportunity.
Back to me.
Well, I want to thank you all for being here today. I've worked pretty closely with a lot of you, and you've been doing this a long time. One of the things we know is that prior to COVID, we had seen a 60% decrease in homelessness throughout the region. Other people may not realize that the work you're doing is not just in the city, it's through the region, into the rural areas, and the city provides the bulk of the funding for this. So if there's anything we can advocate for, it's with our community. Our other localities to pitch in, anything will help. You know, I want to commend, you know, the progress being made, the new expanded location for Ram House that's coming online is going to be a big game changer. What T-Lot, least of these is doing in Roanoke County with the motel is very innovative. So many of the programs are grassroots efforts that are making a difference. Though I wanted to talk about a couple of things that may be elephants in the room that we didn't really address today. First of all, we have an ongoing issue with encampments. I know we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in encampment cleanup and trying to connect with people, relocate people. Sometimes the outreach workers, whether it's HAT team or T-Lot that does the night outreach or anyone else that does this, knows that we've seen an increase in behavioral issues as well as mental health. I'm glad to hear about the HomeSafe units, because I think we need more shelter space, dedicated housing for people in mental health crisis, and so I'm glad to see that that's emerging. I don't know what the answer is ultimately to ending encampments, other than getting people housed. I think they absolutely go hand in hand, but to have those wraparound services is also very critical. I know that many of you have met, and I've met, probably many of us have, with downtown businesses, and the theme I hear is not just their concern about what they're seeing and what they're encountering, but also that they want to be part of the solution. So I'm hopeful that Dr. Patton, I see Tina here with DRI, and Will with the Ambassador Program, if we could convene a conversation, a meeting with businesses to really, they want to be a part of the solution, and I think this is a prime opportunity for us to do that. Do you want to?
Yes, Mayor Vice Mayor, Moon Subcity Council, on last Thursday, the mayor, myself, and Mrs. Vernon attended the City Managers Breakfast that's hosted by Economic Development. There were 18 business owners at that meeting, and the conversation during our breakfast was around the unhoused and the areas in the downtown that businesses are really feeling that they are being impacted by the unhoused down in the area. I presented to them, and you already have this, because it was presented to you, the new downtown safety and visibility enhancement plan. Every business in Roanoke, those who were there at the breakfast and those who were not, everyone on last Thursday received not only my letter, but the enhancement plan with phone numbers. In addition, after that meeting, and being so, you know, what can we do? And that was the theme of it, after everyone presented what their concerns. We want to help, what can we do? And what I have, and you will get the letters, you will get a copy of the letter, I ended it by saying, over the next month, I will host several roundtable gatherings entitled "Challenges and Change." The discussion will focus on what we can do collectively to affect change in the areas we see needing to change. I asked them if you're interested, gave them a number or an email that they can reach out to. Mrs. McGill is already getting some persons who say they want to help. And when we're thinking about the team here who shared with me when I met with them, if we can just get a bus, and I was kind of giving brainstorming some ideas, I feel confident that after these two roundtables that we have, we're going to find a way to put together where it's just not the city, but someone to say, you know, I can pitch in, $120,000, you can pitch in, and we've got the money that can start it, and then we can look for grants through Mrs. Ferguson of how we can continue. So we are moving, and I'm so appreciative of the presentation, and I invited the business owners, if they could get a way to come to this today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, there were just two other things I wanted to highlight. One is, we've talked through the years, we've seen different proposals about more rapid-unit housing. We've seen concepts for tiny home villages. Just, and Atlanta, through a Housing Opportunity Fund, I mean, they're investing like $500 million in rapid housing units to address their situation. I believe we can do that on a smaller scale, and I hope we will revisit that, because the urgency is before us, and a lot of the legwork has already been done to make that happen. That might just mean an invest from the city, it might just mean what land do we have available that we could pilot this and move forward on it. The last thing I wanted to say was with the Greater Roanoke Workforce Development and Virginia Career Works moving downtown to the 707 Building across from the main library, I know they're very active in trying to find ways, they're meeting with HAT team, with the clients at the Rescue Mission, Ram House, to get people more quickly employed. I really hated to see like the 50-some percent of people who have no income. Now, of that 50%, I'd be curious to know who's employable, because if you've got high levels of mental health crisis, or unless that person's stable, they may not be able to work. But we've got a, another partner, Workforce Development, that's here that wants to be a part of that solution. So as, to the degree that we can prioritize that and get people more quickly employed, it provides structure for their lives, it provides them income, they're able to sustain so many more things along the way, and it's, again, going to help reduce some of the issues that we're seeing. So, thank.
And along that line, we are working with them to have them on-site at the mission on a regular basis, and so we're in the talks right now to make that happen. So they hopefully will be there weekly or on a bi-weekly schedule that will help increase access to those services.
And I think the plan with the transportation piece, too, is to connect folks with those types of resources in addition to just going from the Rescue Mission, Ram, and HAT, but really connect folks with those other supportive services that they need to.
Yeah, and I know that a lot of the providers here are working alongside to just address some more of those service-based programs that we can do in collaboration with each other. So kudos to all of you, you're amazing, and we're going to get this, we're going to get this done. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, and thank you for your presentation. One of the things I was really surprised to see, the reasons that people lose their housing is not because of alcohol and drugs. I was really surprised to see that. Thank you for putting that up.
Yeah, I think what we tend to see is with the loss of housing, folks tend to self-medicate because it's your traumatic experience. So we tend to see more substance use when folks actually experience homelessness and more mental health crisis, just because they don't have that stability of housing. So those typically aren't primary reasons why folks lose housing. It's more of the relationship conflict, the unaffordability, low income, those types of factors.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Oh, and one other thing. I noticed that back in 2012, we have 561 homeless or on shelter, and today, how many do we have?
We have, what was the number, Brian? This year?
342.
342. We had 402, I think, last January, so we're still way under where we were in 2012, but still significant challenges, right?
We're still lower. Yes, because a lot of people are saying, oh, you know, on houses, the numbers are incredible. We never see them this high. They were high back in 2012.
That's a good point. Go with Mayor Bowers.
Wait a minute, now you don't use that name up here.
That's like, that's like a curse word up here.
Yeah, it's...
Sweet.
This is kind of season. Anybody else got anything?
No, she said it all.
Okay, let me thank you all for what you do, and I've had a chance to spend a lot of time with some of you, and we're very much appreciated, and as long as I'm around, we're going to do all we can to help you. Now, that time is getting short.
Does he get a lot of work? What can you get him?
We'll work on it, but thank you so much. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
So council will be in recess until our 2:00 PM session here in the chamber. Thank you.